Hi Bill. You're muted, I think.
There you are.
There you are.
Now I'll ask how you're doing.
I'm doing well, thank you. How are you today?
Good, good.
It looks like we're the early birds.
Yeah, I'm having trouble with my light here. It's too bright and I can't seem to fix it.
Yeah, it is very bright, isn't it?
Yeah, something never had it happen before.
It might be your background picture.
Could be.
Yeah, your background picture is very light, so it could be doing something. I don't know what happened to my background picture. It disappeared.
Yeah, your pretty flowers?
Yes, they're gone.
This is, I have to get out of the way. This is like Rose Waff down in Boston. It's an old steamship I went on as a kid.
Oh, nice. Oh, and there was Charlotte online. Cool.
Hi, Charlotte.
I think Charlotte is muted.
Yep.
Oh, that's right. This meeting, no, no, this meeting, she should be able to unmute. Let's see. Maybe she doesn't want to talk to us.
Sure, I'll talk to you.
Hi, Charlotte.
I was muted so that I wouldn't be interrupting if my dog should bark or anything, but...
Oh, that's okay. You'll hear my dog chime in.
Mine's going out for a ride to get out of the way.
Hi Dennis.
Hi Pam. So you figured out that you can run this, huh?
Yes, it opened right up for me. That was lovely. Let Terry Heller in. We're growing a community. Hi Terry. She's muted. If people want to unmute and say hi, they can. We'll mute everybody when the meeting starts.
I guess I should turn my TV off.
Well, depends. What are you watching?
Just the news.
Oh God, turn it off.
I actually leave the TV on all day for the dogs.
Oh wow. No, I leave my little dog in silence, poor thing.
Used to leave ours with classical music on.
I've done that before, too.
Oh, yes.
We love our dogs, don't we?
Oh yeah.
Mine has me very well-trained.
That's what I say, too.
Gosh. Well. We've got one, oh look. He needs to pick his head up. Oh baby. Oh. Cute.
Mine is Dennis.
Jack Russell.
Oh yeah.
I have two of them.
A lot of energy.
Being shy.
Big energy.
They're a little hyperactive, aren't they?
Well, these two are a little older, so they're pretty girl.
Hi Kathy. You're muted. You're muted. Dennis is sharing his dog with us. Oh, what a cutie.
Oh, I'm glad the dogs are here. That's great. I will not invite my cats. But they'll come if they feel like it, anyway.
They'll type for you.
Wouldn't that be nice?
Well, this is kind of, I looked at, when I first looked at the agenda, I think, well, this isn't that bit long of an agenda, but there's an awful lot on here, so we might not finish all of it tonight.
Well, I think some of it will go fairly quickly.
Yeah.
It just, we'll see.
We'll see how it goes. Oh, what a pretty puppy. You come here and say hello. I will show everyone Matilda.
She's like, yeah, I'm not looking.
What are you doing? Leave me alone. She was sleeping. She says I was sleeping. Why'd you wake me up?
What's her name?
Matilda.
Oh, Matilda. I love that name.
She's a long-haired Chihuahua. Almost eight pounds of her. Pretty good girl. Yes, you are. Okay, you can go back to bed. She's giving me a look. She's 13 years old.
Oh my goodness. Good for her. Wow. One of my cats is at least that old.
Yeah.
Shelter cat. They didn't really know how old he was when we got him, so. Guessing game.
I don't know. My whole day is planned around my pet, so.
Uh huh. Are you kidding? My whole life is planned around mine.
Well, there's that, too.
I know how you, yes, exactly. And when I had the horses, that made it even trickier.
Yeah, I looked through that, too.
Yeah, I haven't owned a horse in, gosh, 40 years, I think.
I had my last one put to rest three years ago, I think.
Oh.
Three years ago, yeah. He was 30 years old, born here on the farm.
Oh my gosh. Wow.
So he's buried next to his mother in the pet cemetery behind the barn. Has all the kids' chipmunks, every pet we ever had.
It's like a Stephen King novel. They called it pen cemetery.
This is the other one.
Oh.
Yeah, those Jack Russells are awesome.
Yeah, this one's a little smaller.
Yep, she is. She only weighs 10 pounds. I thought she weighed 14.
Oh, yeah. Oh, she's so cute.
She is, she's a good one.
Don't you love their little faces?
Dogs. They're all neat. I love them all. Now, Bill, where is Bradley? You ought to have Bill the local star, gonna hobble east.
His mom has taken him for a ride, so he won't be barking during this. He has to go for a ride every night, anyway.
Oh my goodness. Mine is not the only one.
Well, he wants to go, and when he gets out there, he falls asleep.
Well, that's the whole point, like a baby.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You put him in the car, you drive him around, they sleep.
I didn't know about that. I used to have the boys run around the house and I'd time them, tell them they had a world's record, then they'd fall asleep when they get in the house.
Let's see. This is, got a couple more people coming in. Jefferson Slack is...
Is that his flag shirt, I see?
Hello, Jefferson Slack. You're muted.
You would think after all this time, I'd have it down.
I know. I do think you should.
Progress, Jeff. This was faster than the last time figuring it out, so.
Right.
It's hope for all of us.
Yes, there is.
Okay. Sarah is coming in. So we are missing for a select board. We're just missing Kim. And I'm not sure how many members are on the school board total.
There's five of us.
Five of you, okay. Okay.
Jeff, are you standing on your head?
No, I'm kind of weak. I've got my laptop going.
It looks like tiles on your business.
Yeah, they look like tiles.
Oh no, that's my ceiling. Let me see if I can talk.
And I haven't even had anything to drink.
I love it.
On that house channel, or whatever it is, the fixer-upper things.
Right.
And here comes Kim Anderson coming in.
Hi, Kim.
So how many, how many school board members are here so far?
That one, that's it.
It looks like just me.
Who is, I don't know who Todd is. Yeah, yeah, I'm Michelle. I'm Pam. Is there a Todd on the school board?
No.
No? Okay.
So there should be Ina.
Jason.
Jason Putnam, Mike Dunn.
On right now.
Oh, we got two people in the waiting room there.
Yeah.
And then Terry.
Let's see. So we've got Laura. Oh, there's Michael Dunn.
Oh, there's Jason.
No, I'm not. Oh, there's Jason. Recognize him, okay. Okay, so. Are we waiting for anyone else, or are you all here now?
I don't see Ina and I don't see Desiree.
I don't know if Ina's coming.
Okay.
I think it'd be Zach.
Ooh. Okay.
Was Terry Wood planning to come?
Yeah, she'll be right here. We just got out of another one.
Okay, alright.
She'll be right here.
Very good.
Sorry. Did have another appointment tonight, so she won't be here.
Okay, so no one's coming. Well, this is Zoom number three for me today.
It's gonna be all of our names.
I had my second COVID shot yesterday.
I'm gonna get my first one.
How'd you score one, Jeff?
I work in the health industry, Jason.
Oh, that's right. Okay, makes sense. Good, good for you.
He's legal.
Jason, it's because I'm 70. I bet you can tell.
You're not 70 years old.
From Laura, meanwhile, to everyone, Larry will be here as well in about five minutes.
Okay. So we'll wait a couple, it's 6:03 now. We'll wait a couple more minutes to get some more people in, so we're all on the same, all here to start. Anybody else have a dog they want to show and tell? We've already had a couple that have visited.
How appropriate, showing tell with a screen.
You could also show the kitties. Somebody, one person down here has a picture of their little dog sleeping in their bed.
That's the king, King Henry.
So cute. Look at that little face.
Wait a minute, where's the puppy?
Well, you know, King Henry is very, very upset that we have ruined his solitude, so.
What a great name, King Henry. I love it.
Oh, you should see him in his police uniform.
We call him Lil Chief here at the house.
He's so sweet. He's a good boy.
He is a good boy.
Oops. Just waiting for...
Terry is asking if she can get in. I don't know what's happening with her. She said that she's trying.
I'm not seeing anyone in the waiting room.
I'll let her know to try again.
Yeah.
And Mike, I don't know if you want to try to get in touch with Desiree to remind her. I'm on my phone, so I can't text her, because I'm on my phone, using my phone tonight.
Okay.
Terry is here. According to the note.
Liz is here. So. Give it a couple more minutes to let Terry Wood get logged in.
There she is.
There she is. And admit it. And...
So Desiree just sent me a message saying crazy slow trying to get on.
Oh, okay.
So she's trying to get on.
I think she might be on the wrong link like I was. There's two.
Do you want to messenger her? Because like I told Mike, I'm on my phone, so I can't really messenger her.
We're so quiet.
And it was so quiet. I thought maybe you needed to see another fine dog. You want me to start?
Oh.
This is Jenna. The famous black. In fact, she's so black, you can hardly see her, I think, but yeah. Show them your cute face.
What a good dog.
She's a sweet girl.
Oh, she loves you.
That was enough, darling.
She wanted her five minutes of pain.
All dogs get a chance.
That's right.
Still not seeing... So are we just waiting for Desiree?
Is Kim here yet?
Kim is here.
I sent her both links.
Hello, I'm here.
Hi, Kim.
Hi, Kim.
Hi, everybody. I can't show you my dog right now.
Are you driving?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, okay, I'm driving, but I'm not looking. I mean, I'm...
Okay.
Zoom has, excuse me, Zoom has a drive safe feature, so you guys are amplified through my car audio. I can't see you, and I don't think you can see me, but you can hear me, right?
How cool is that? Kim, that is really cool.
Yeah, we can hear you. We just can't see you.
Too bad I look really good today.
Here's Desiree. Desiree coming in. I said, yes, not seeing it.
She's coming.
Well, it really is slow logging on, so I guess we'll be careful that we only talk one person at a time, because it looks like this is a little overwhelmed tonight. Okay, so. I believe we have almost the entire school board on, the entire Board of Selectmen are here, the town managers here. So I'm going to call the meeting to order at 6:11. And. Just, I guess I'll have the select board members go through and just tell you who they are, introduce themselves, and the town manager can introduce himself, and then each of the school board members also give us a brief introduction, why you do what you do, or whatever you feel you want to share. So Dennis, do you want to go first?
Sure. So for those of you who don't know me, I'm Dennis. I am the town manager. I've worked for the town now for two years. The first 18 months I worked as the EMS director, and since August, I've been the town manager. I am from this area. I grew up in Knox County. I've lived my entire life, except for the last couple of years in Knox County, most of it in Cushing, so I'm pretty familiar with the area and happy to be here and really enjoying my time here in Wiscasset, so.
Okay. My name's Pam Dunning. I'm currently chairman of the Board of Selectmen. This is my first year on this go-around. I was on six years previously, lived in Wiscasset for, it's almost 40, it's between 47 and 48 years now. So I feel like a native, but I'm still from away. Love Wiscasset. It is my hometown, so. It means a lot to me. And will go, for me, will go to alphabetically with select board members is Kim Anderson.
Hello. So I'm Kim Anderson. I moved to Wiscasset with my family in 2005, and I took my first service to the town was to the Wiscasset School Board. I was appointed to... I was enrolled through 2012. Took a couple of years off. I started working for Wiscasset School. Got certified to be a teacher. Then I got certified to be an administrator. Again, thank you, Wiscasset. Ran for select board for the first time three years ago, so I'm now almost in the middle of my second term. I no longer work in town. I'm working up in Sears Board as the dean of students there, and working on my doctorate in education.
Thank you, Kim. Kathy Martin Savage?
Hi.
Want to say hi?
Hello, everybody. Kathy Martin Savage. I've been living in Wiscasset 40 years, going on 41, the longest I've lived anywhere in my entire life, and I feel like this is definitely my hometown, even though, as Pam said, she was away, from away. I am also from away. My first, I've had almost six years on the Board of Selectmen. The first two were back when the town voted for a charter form of government, and it made the board five members instead of the three, and I won one of those new seats. And then this is my second term, and which will end in June.
You just muted yourself.
Anything. Sorry about that. Just my hand waving in the front of the computer does that. My apologies. Anyway, I love Wiscasset, and I do have many friends here, and I love the town.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Okay, Jefferson.
My name's Jeff Slack. I'm finishing up my eighth year on the select board. I moved to town, let me see, I've lived here in Wiscasset 32 years, and again, it's like what Pam and Catherine said, this is my hometown, so I really feel a calling, you know. You know, I really enjoy helping and working in Wiscasset.
Thank you, Jeff. And I'll let Terry Wood, if you'd like to be in charge of getting yourself introduced and calling on the school board members.
Don't forget Sarah.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry, Sarah. Oh, you were written up on the side of my page. Sorry. Okay, Sarah.
Hi, Sarah.
Hi, Sarah.
Hi, everyone. Who is that, Dennis?
This is Pete.
Oh my gosh. Love it.
Hi, everyone. My name's Sarah Whitfield. This is my first term on the board. I did serve on the school board from 2005 to 2009. I got elected five days after I graduated from high school. Lifelong Wiscasset resident, except for five years that I lived in DC right after college. I currently work for the University of Southern Maine Foundation as the Director of Annual Giving. That's new as of the pandemic, actually. Haven't actually really been into the office at all. And I'm finishing up my PhD in public policy and have really always been interested in public policy and really passionate about Wiscasset and particularly Coastal Maine and Lincoln County being prosperous in the future, just with our demographic winter in terms of not having as many young professionals and families moving into the region. So that's part of my drive for wanting to be on the select board, and it's been a great experience so far, and really looking forward to connecting with all of you.
Great. Thank you, Sarah, and sorry again. And we'd like to hear from the school now.
Okay, hi, everyone. I am Terry Wood. I have been coming down to Wiscasset, to Poppam Beach, for the last 28 years. I've always loved Wiscasset, and so I am in my third year as the superintendent here in Wiscasset, and I enjoy what I do, and I love our kids, I love the community, and even though it's a very challenging time in education, to me, this is what I enjoy doing, and I feel so fulfilled by working here in Wiscasset. So I have a great, a phenomenal school board that assists me in being able to be successful at my job, so I will introduce Mike Dunn, the Chair of our Board.
Hello, I am Mike Dunn, and I have been on the board, I want to say, eight or nine years. I believe I'm in my third term. Been chairman for the last four, four or five years. I've been in Wiscasset about 35 years of my life, with a couple of years here or there. And I joined the board. I was approached by one of the other people on the board back when we first transitioned out of the RSU, and I wanted to try to influence things and help things go in the right direction for my kids that have now graduated and are excelling at college, and one graduated. And I probably have a few more years in me, so.
So, okay, Jason, the Vice Chair, Jason Putnam.
Hi, I'm Jason Putnam. I've been on the school board. This is my fifth year, and like you said, I'm currently the Vice Chair. And like you said, I'm currently the Vice Chair. I really enjoy it and I think the public school system is the most important institution in our country. And that's why I'm involved in it.
Thank you, Jason. Michelle?
Hi. Let's see, this year actually makes 20 years that I've been living up here in Wiscasset. And I moved up because my husband's family is multi-generations into this town. I started with subbing in the school, well volunteering, then subbing, then working. And then I just wanted to get a better understanding of our school and try to do what I can to make it the best that I can for my kids that are still in school. So I decided to come on to the school board and step out of working on. And this is my fourth year right now.
Thank you, Michelle. And Desiree? You're on mute.
Sorry. So I have lived in Wiscasset. I originally was from Edgcombe and made the big move across the bridge. And been here ever since. My husband and I decided to raise our families here and have our kids be in the school system. That did me so well, I personally feel. I was the generation that had all of the other schools coming into, being from Edgcombe and Dresden and Whitefield. You know, we all had that opportunity to come to Wiscasset and everyone wanted that so bad. It was an honor to be able to come to Wiscasset, you know. So anyway, I got on the board because this is my, I'm going on my third year. I got involved because the conversation came back up, I want to say it must have been three or four years ago of possibly closing our high school. And I was curious about what that meant, where it was coming from and why people were wanting that. So I started doing research. I went in to sit with the superintendent at the time and she answered a lot of my questions. And so there was talk about a committee and I had wanted to be part of the committee just so I could really truly understand the pros and cons. And that's actually what got me on the school board now today, was learning about all the wonderful things that our school had to offer and all of the wonderful things that was happening that I didn't know about as a parent, that I didn't know about as a town person. And I really just wanted to find out more and be a part of that. And my job on the school board that I would really like to do, something I'm the most passionate about, is I would like to communicate with parents, with the town, with my fellow school board members. Everything that is happening, all the goods, all the wonderful things that are happening, I want to put out there to the universe so that everyone can hear about it as often as I do on the board. That's my plan. That's my goal. It has been since day one. So I'm really excited for the opportunity to meet with the town. I think it's a beautiful relationship. The town, the school, the teachers, everyone really needs to unite to make it work. So I think this is wonderful and I thank you all for the time today.
Thank you. And Ina is another board member we have and she was not able to attend tonight. And I do have a daughter that's at the middle high school and she loves it here. She's a junior and she's enjoying it here in Wiscasset. So that's all of us. And then I have a few administrators that are here as well.
Great. Thank you. Okay, so the purpose of following down through the agenda, the basic purpose of the workshop tonight is, I can't remember who it was on the board that first stated it, but it just seems that, seems natural that we should meet and get to know each other a little bit and try and figure out what are some of the challenges that we're all facing of the ways that we can work together. There's a lot of questions in town by, from the public on issues in the school and I think some good information and some misinformation and getting some of it cleared up to see where the holes are and what's going on. So there's no way for us to get together and do this work unless we ask some difficult questions. And I know we're all gonna be really nice about it and have good discussions, which is what really needs to happen, is to be able to hold the discussions. So that's basically the purpose of the meeting from the town side of it. So I'm gonna move on to item number four and go back to Terry Wood. And you can fill us in on current status of the schools and the number of students and so forth. I'm assuming everyone has a copy of the agenda in front of them, so hopefully.
They forwarded it to our board, so they should-
Okay, great.
Currently, as of January 25th, we have 173 students at the elementary school. And we have a total of 271 students at the middle high school for a total enrollment right now of 444 students. When you asked me how COVID has affected school operations, I kind of tried, I thought, okay, I'm gonna be positive. It's been very trying since March, I will be honest. I don't think I've really taken any time off because there was just so much work to do to make sure that we could still educate our kids. The teachers have been phenomenal, the support staff, everyone has worked so well together. What has, what did happen is I brought the elementary school back hybrid. So we are still green, which means we could have all kids in. But in order to follow all of the framework to return to school, there were six categories that you had to make sure that you complied with. So from March, I had members of the school committee and parents on every one of the different committees, just for safety, I mean, transportation, there were so many guidelines for the cafeteria, distancing, sanitizing, so many different things. Some parents were not happy because they wanted their kids back in school four days a week. So we ended up having, right now, we have 17 of our students are homeschooled. Now, as of this week, we have, our students at the elementary school are back in four days a week. So we were able to do the spacing, do the overflow rooms, so you can only, kids have to be three feet apart. As you know, as education has cycled around, a lot of the kids were working in round tables. And so we could not follow the guidelines, so we had to get desks. And we've really done a lot of shifting. We dug in every closet, cabinet, and we've been able to use the furniture that we had. And during Christmas break, I worked with a group of staff reconfiguring the classrooms. We've had to change the stairways, the direction where the kids could go. We couldn't use water fountains anymore because the kids would have their mouths on it. So we were able to retrofit and update with the CRF, the grant funds, that were specific to COVID. So we couldn't purchase anything or buy anything or contract anything that was already put in our school budget. We were not allowed to do that. So we have three students, out of those students, we have 17 that were homeschooled. We ended up having 51 students leaving the district at the elementary level. And we have 38 new students. We had five students register just last week. So I notice in Wiscasset, a lot of times you have an influx of families that come in. I actually have two families from Texas that purchased homes on, right where the schools are, on Gardner Road. So there were a total of five siblings. So I have three of them at the elementary school and two are at the middle high school. So I said, what are you doing coming from Texas? We do have service people coming into the area as well. So I'm hoping that, my goal is that being back into four days, we have three students that also went to private school. So now that we're back in, I really am, I will be contacting these parents to see if they would be sending the kids back. I think that the students will come back. Those students will come back that are homeschooled. Some of them do have medical issues in the family, so they really cannot send their children to school. So we have to respect that as well. So we do have 27 students as of today that are still fully remote. And that's out of the 173. So we're excited. The kids are excited. I have heard so many, "I love you, Mrs. Wood. I miss you, Mrs. Wood," over the last two weeks. And they are so excited to be back in school and we're happy to have them back. So things are going very well at the elementary school, the high school. We've been bringing pods of kids back in. And again, the high school is, for space, they do not have the space that they need to, with the overflow, because their classes are much larger. So we have purchased a secondhand portable that is on site in the back parking lot. So we'll be able to make two classrooms out of that. We've done some demolition in the locker rooms. Our locker rooms are gigantic. So we've been able to do a classroom in one and still have plenty of room for a locker room with the showers and the benches and the lockers themselves. So we've been working on that as well. So lots of things going on and continuing to bring students in. But again, we have to make sure that we're complying with the framework from the Department of Education.
Very, thank you. That's a lot of information. Wow. Excuse me. Was there anything, anything that anyone from the school board wanted to add to what was just given to us? Or, yes, Jason?
I just wanted to add that Dr. Wood is also our elementary principal and was last year as well.
Thank you.
I have S for sucker. I just love the kids. And we have a lot of changes going on and I just felt that they needed some consistency. The staff needed consistency. And so I am weaning myself out of there. We will be hiring a principal in the spring. And so right now, I am, I think the work that's needed to be done and the support that the staff has needed, they're all set. So then I can continue my work and work on strategic planning and other projects that I've been kind of putting on hold. Thank you, Jason.
Sure.
Is there any questions from the select board for, is it Dr. Wood?
Fine, Terry's fine. It was a long hard draw, but Terry Wood is fine.
Okay. So is anyone-
It was a while.
Does anyone from the select board have a question for Terry that pertains to what she was just speaking to? Yes, Sarah?
Just a quick one. How many of the 271 at the middle high school, how many is nine through 12? In other words, the high school level?
170.
Okay, thank you.
I have, I have 101 is for the middle school, six through eight, and 179 through 12.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the select board? Seeing none, we're gonna move on to number five. So I'm sure we're all fully aware that there are a couple of citizens who are in the process of taking out a petition to circulate, to see about, looking into, I'm not sure how they would, not looking at the exact documents, so I might get the wording not quite right. But in essence of turning our local school system into a K through H and that would be giving our high school students a school of choice. So we would be tuitioning the students elsewhere. So I think I opened this up first to a response from the schools. Terry, if you want to respond to that first or-
Well, it would be pre-K because we do enroll pre-K in Wiscasset. Pre-K program. I do not agree that that's what's best for Wiscasset. I think that you have so much to offer, even though, what's difficult in Wiscasset is when you have fewer families. And I think, Sarah, you've said that too. We've talked about that, how we can recruit families and attract families. And whenever you start closing schools, you start ruining the community. The schools are the centers of communities. You've got a lot of things going on around, but when you don't have a school, I don't see how you would be attracting more families. When people have kids in two different schools, far away where they're traveling, where the older kids may be watching the younger kids, you're gonna have parents then pulling from the elementary school as well. When I look at other area schools, I have been involved in schools withdrawing or tuitioning their students in different areas. And when I look at the costs of the area schools, it's not necessarily going to be cheaper for you. If you're looking, I know I had Booth Bay, someone had contacted me. And the elementary cost, $13,190.68 to tuition an elementary school. And I just hope that when you're thinking about doing this, it's not just tuition. You've got to pay so many more expenses. Your special ed is totally a different expense. Your transportation is going to be different expenses. So you can't just look at that tuition cost. So I just think that, you know, when people want to look at that, that's, you know, you, everyone, I'm a taxpayer here and my taxes are high. I find my taxes are high. But I also see the beautiful things that I get by living in Wiscasset and the downtown and just the small community feel. Is it, do I think my taxes are worth it? I do. So I think when we're looking at that comparison, I just, just, I just be cautious. I just be cautious. It's not always greener. And just what is your outcome? If your outcome is to bring families into this community, have students in school, have them become workers in the community, have them, like a lot of you say, "I've been here how many years?" That's who we want in our community. We want lifers in Wiscasset. So I, you know what I mean? I don't support closing the school, but I will provide and work with you to get information that you need and it is understandable. So I just wanted to share that. I do understand that.
Okay. So Terry, can I ask you, you've been here three years and so you might not be able to answer to anything prior to that. But this question has been being asked in Wiscasset for, I want to say, eight to 10 years now. This is not a new question. So do you know, has the Wiscasset School Board ever looked at these numbers before in any systematic way, collecting this information together to see what would be the difference in cost and what would be the difference in what classes we might offer, what kind of classes our students might get in other schools that maybe aren't available here? And what was, there was three things people asked me about. It was the difference in cost, what classes would our students have available to them? And I've gone blank on the third one, but I'll just, I'll just-
If it comes up, Pam, just say, "in this one."
In this one, yeah.
I'm gonna tell you, no, no from my perspective. Because when I come here and I look what we offer our kids, my daughter is, my daughter skipped a grade. She's very, very smart. I was nervous. I was coming in, I'm like, okay, I want her to have every opportunity. She has won competitions for your music program you have here. She has won in competitions for the drama that you have here. Our STEM, our science, our forensic, our math- Our STEM, our science, our forensic, our math, you guys, for the number of students, if you look at your program of studies, you offer a lot of things that even very nearby schools do not offer. So I have never, since I've been here, considered Wiscasset, oh, you're smaller and you're not able to offer our kids other opportunities. That is not the case here in Wiscasset. Forensic, science, we, oh yeah, Kim, Kim's right there.
I just wanted to, if it's okay, I just wanted to add that one of the benefits of a small school is that you are able to customize the learning experience for your kids. Like my child is taking German and she's planning a year abroad in Germany through Wiscasset schools. Not to mention the band and everything else. So, you know, a lot, like I'm working in another small school right now and they don't offer nearly as many things that Wiscasset offers. For roughly the same amount of money, same amount of students. So I think we do a really great job. We have a small comprehensive school. And we have a lot of kids that come back to our school from other schools where they just feel like they're lost in the crowd. So, you know, we're a small public school, the kids have the opportunity there to have almost a private school experience. So it's really quite remarkable and we're, we're lucky. It's a selling point for our town.
Okay, thank you, Kim. Does, does any of the school board members want to add anything to what Terry shared? Yes, Desiree?
I just wanted to add, I was just thinking about this. And again, when I came over to Wiscasset, we always had tuition students from other towns and I was actually the cutoff year. So, and thank goodness my class made it in, so I could go to Wiscasset. But that's when we start really seeing Wiscasset decline was when we lost our tuition students. And then the next step, I believe, was we got enrolled in the RSU. And then that didn't work out so well, so then we withdrew from the RSU. And now we're talking about closing the school again, or, or, or maybe not closing the school, but doing the tuition situation, which would actually cost the town money to do. Not to mention the remodeling that we would have to do because now you've got the, the middle school, that's the high school as well. So there's a lot to that, but it just, it worries me that this has come up so much in my lifetime that we've made some decisions along the way, closing the elementary school. You know, that was a big decision. I just, I would like to stop the cycle of having to go back and wishing that we didn't do stuff, if you know what I mean. You know, we tend to jump into something and then we have regrets and then we've got to have a buyout plan to fix our mistakes. So I just want to make sure if this does continue, you know, I mean, this is an extremely serious deal and this could absolutely change our entire vision as a town. And, and that, that frightens me. That frightens me a lot. So I just want to make sure that we take this incredibly seriously. Come back from it if we don't.
Right, thank you, Desiree. The, the next person that had their hand up was first Michael Dunn and then Jason Putnam. So Mike, Michael, you had something to say?
Yeah, I mean, you mentioned the timeline for as long as this has been being discussed, but that takes us back to about the time when the town voted to withdraw from the RSU. So that we, as I understood, it would have more local control and a local voice over our schools, which was part of the reason I got involved with this to start with. That was my intention, was that the schools would be in our control. We would be able to make changes that we saw to make it better for our students. And in the time since the withdrawal, none of the people on the school committee have ever considered closing the high school. And none of us have that thought in mind at this point in time. We did close the elementary school. That was for the specific reason that we didn't need three buildings anymore for the number of students we had. If we were to get rid of the high school, we would still have the middle school students to take care of. We do not have room for them in the current elementary school, so we would still have to keep two buildings. So you wouldn't see any cost savings there by closing that. So I would just say that, you know, it's not in the best interest, as far as I'm concerned, to do that. And to just think that one of us and one of you and a few other people from the community could do all of the research and figuring necessary to come up with all of the answers to what would be saved and what the cost would be and everything else. I think it would take something on a much larger scale than that to really develop a plan if that was to be something that was being considered. So that's just my thoughts on that. And I think actually Michelle was probably before Jason and I, so.
I'm, I'm calling them in the order I saw them, but so Michelle can go after Jason. Go ahead, Jason.
Well, Mike just covered a couple of things. I have a lot of reasons why I think this is a really bad idea and I don't need to necessarily spell them out here. Number one, fiscal savings like this is just so short sighted. This town, things have been flowing in our, in our community. And Wiscasset's always been a leader. Currently, right now, we don't have the students for the school, but if you get rid of it, it's, it's way harder, way easier to tear stuff apart than it is to build it back up. That's one thing. That's something we could, since I've been here, I've witnessed the number of. It really appears that Wiscasset is a victim of a lot of poor decisions in the last ten, fifteen years. Okay, and we're paying for them all the time. And people, you know, we're all paying for them, literally. And there's other things in this town that need to be repaired. We need to be worried about fixing things, not tearing stuff apart. And then I, I will admit or agree with Mike that nobody that could possibly be on this committee is qualified. There's going to be bias in one direction or the other. And then the, to do a serious economic impact study requires professionals and requires money to do it right. There's so many things that it would be really difficult for volunteers. I've been on the planning board of the ORC and a ton of work, a ton of work just doing those things. I was on the comprehensive planning committee. That was a ton of work. I don't see how five volunteers are going to do this, this thing justice. And we just got to think about the kids. We can't be thinking about tax dollars. We can't be thinking, we got to think about the future of our community and the welfare of these kids. These kids have a hard row to hoe right now without people taking them down for reasons that they don't even understand. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jason, very much. And then Michelle, thank you.
So just a couple of things. One, you said something about a comment about like our programs and stuff. And I'll tell you, I have two nieces that graduated from Thornton Academy down in Saco, which is a very big graduating class of like four hundred more kids. And we have classes that here that they don't even offer down there. So they were always amazed by having some of the classes that we offer our high school students that they don't have down there. So we do offer a lot, but out of all the years that, like, I couldn't really partake in when they were deciding to close one school or the other because I worked for the school at the time. And it was kind of frowned upon for us to be part of those committees. But I've noticed over the last twenty years that you guys, this, the one thing with this school, this town, rather than the school board and the select board working together to build a town, they've always worked against each other. I wish people would actually want to look for the best of what's going to help all the way around, not just our school, but our town and look in a long-term picture. Because like everybody said, families aren't going to want to come into a town if we don't have the school. Schools attract families. Businesses, jobs attract families. This town needs jobs. This town needs, you know, we need to come to a conclusion somewhere along the line that we work together to go and not just help the school, but help the town and work in, at a, for, how do I want to say this? Work in a way that we build it up. Because, yes, people don't want to pay the taxes. They're high. You got, the town people complain, oh, we spend too much money on the school and da, da, da. Well, we're not getting our kids anymore, our tuition from Dresden, from Edgcombe, from Westport Island as much. We've got to go and open that back up and we've got to attract them to want to come over here. And we got to give them a reason, but it's not just the school, it's the town that has to offer some things too in order to bring those people here. So I think it's, instead of trying to work against each other once again and say, let's close the school or let's do this, we need to look at a picture and say like, what do we really need? What do our kids need and what do our, you know, parents and families in the town need to make it work and to draw people in and actually work together for once? And build a plan together on not just building our school and making our school even better, but building the town. I'm sorry, but I just, I, in twenty years, I've watched you guys work all against each other and never work together and really look at a big, long-term plan. It's always seems to be quick decisions.
But I think we're heading that way now.
Well, I know, and that's why I'm saying this is good, but I, I really hope that we can work together on look, building for not just the school, but the town. And what do we both need to make it work for everybody? And, you know.
So thank you, Michelle. Yes, this is the purpose of the whole, this is the entire purpose of this meeting. So it's better to not probably accuse each other of.
I'm not accusing anybody. Over the years, it has, in twenty years being here, I've watched, you know, like this thing come up. Oh, let's close the school, let's close the school. And it's always seeming to work against instead of like, why? Why do you really want to close this school? There's no real reason to. We do have students, we do have families. We have, you know, a lot of people. I live on a dead end road that I've, people are like three generations into a house. That should speak something about your town. When you have two to three different generations living and, and taking over houses, if a grandparent passes, the child takes it over and then grandchild. That should speak volumes to your guys', our town, that let's keep that momentum growing, that you want to keep people here from generation to generation. But you need a school to do that.
Okay, thank you. Desiree, you have your hand up?
I did, I just wanted to add one more point that I had written down, and that is that our budget, since I've been a part of the board, has been flat the last two times we've done a budget. And I think that that's important too, because that means that there's no increase in town taxes, you know, from the school's point. So I just wanted that to be known as well.
Great, thank you very much. I appreciate it. I'm, I'm going to swap it over and get some comments from the Board of Selectmen now. And the first one I see up is Jeff Slack.
Terry, do you know how many K through twelve students live on, on Westport Island?
I don't have that number right now. I was getting as much data as I can, but I'm in the middle of COVID right now with my kids.
No, 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 no. This is just to start the conversation because Michelle just brought up a great point about kids from these other towns in.
I'll get the number for you. And that's the thing, I, I need to go and I have no problem going to Alma and starting to recruit. And that's kind of part of my strategic plan is going to these outlying towns and showing them what we have in Wiscasset, because I don't think that's been done.
Well, that's what I was getting at, is, is that, is that, is that when I, when I, when I drive into work, there's, there is a Great Salt Bay school bus that, that circles Westport and the bus is full. You, 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 you know, going to Damascotta. So that's what I was, that's what I was wondering. Are, are, are we, you, you know, you know, marketing ourselves? That's.
Very good question. Yeah.
Well, made up a great video last year, Chuck, and he brought it over to Damascotta to the elementary school to go and get kids for the high school.
And I, I just, I'm sorry, Pam, I'm just going to say this quickly, but we were contacted by AOS ninety-eight, I think it was, or ninety-three, asking us for that video and what we have to offer here in Wiscasset. So they are looking. So other schools are having decreases in enrollment as well. And so everyone's looking at what options. So we have been contacted to present what we have to offer in Wiscasset for students.
That's good news. That's really good news. Okay, next. Member would be Sarah, I see your hand. Oh, and then Kim after. Kim, you're right after Sarah.
Um, first, I think it's really important that everybody realizes that the select board is not saying we should close a school. And I think even a lot of the people who have those questions are not saying immediately, let's close a school. I think it's really important to be looking at this more as what are the options? And I think, you know, when this first was brought up at our last select board meeting, I said, it's really important that we have these conversations. And I think it's really important that we keep having these conversations because things change so much. And I totally agree with a lot of what's been said, particularly the mistakes that have been made. I mean, the RSU was, that was a terrible decision in my personal opinion, but also the tuitioning students, like losing Dresden was a huge loss. So I think a lot of these ideas that were even just said two minutes ago are great ideas. I think we still need to be having the conversation of what is next. And that, and I wish, I wish we'd just pull away from the, oh my gosh, it's shutting the school, it's shutting the school, it's shutting the school. Because to me, that's not the conversation in my head. It's, okay, what does it look like ten years from now? You know, and if that's, you know, that's, that's a lot of different options, particularly with the pandemic. I'm hopeful that all of the real estate boom that's happening right now will bring in some more kids, like Terry was saying with the Texas folks. I mean, that sort of thing, I am hopeful. But I think it's really important that, that we're not, that we're not saying we are going to close a school. And I hope, I hope that's not what comes out from this meeting as people go out from this meeting is that we, oh, the select board wants to close a school. I just want you all to know that as school board members, that, that we really, and I think I'm speaking for the board, we really appreciate everything you're doing. And there are so many wonderful things that are coming out of the schools right now. And particularly having prevailed in all of this COVID pandemic time. But I just, I think it is important that we keep the conversation going. And in terms of directly addressing the, the committee, I, I don't know that this is the right time to do it, particularly because of the pandemic. And I realize that in, in the petition, it's a long, it's a like an eighteen month period up to you. But I think you're going to have a lot of issues in terms of the answer. If you got the answer to this question in terms of money tomorrow, the picture we're looking at right now is very different than the picture will be in a year or two years from now. So again, I think it's really important that we keep talking about this, but we, as Michelle's saying, and I live on the same dead end road. I think it's really important that we keep these conversations going and we keep talking as, as multiple boards and we keep doing this collaboration across all kinds of committees. We've been talking about this in all kinds of different boards. So that's just my two cents.
Just, just before, just before, thank you, Sarah. I appreciate all of that. Because just before Kim jumps in, I'm gonna, I'm gonna reinforce what Sarah just said, is this is not about the Board of Selectmen saying we want you to close the school. This is the Board of Selectmen saying, we hear these questions all over town and we've been hearing them for years. Let's get the answers out there. Let's have these meetings. Let's have these discussions. Let's get the information out. And, and that's what, that's what this is all about. We, we, the public need to have real numbers and not somebody down the street and saying, oh, there's only ten kids in the second grade this year. I mean, there are ridiculous numbers out there. There are guestimates all over the place. Let's, let's have these meetings and get everyone informed. Real information from the people who have the numbers. And, and yes, at some point, we are still going to want to find out what would be the answer. What would happen if you went K, pre-K through eight and you outsourced your high school students and you came back with, if, 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 if there's all this expense for special ed and the tuition costs and all of that, and if there's no real savings, then that's what they're asking. That, that's the question they're asking. And as taxpayers, it's a valid question. But let's, let's get the real numbers out there and, and let's get some real answers for people. And, and do it by having these discussions. So I really appreciate filling in and I'm taking Kim's time and Kim, you're muted. So if you want to unmute.
Thanks, Pam. So I guess I have a lot of thoughts about this topic. The, the first thing I want to reiterate is that the select board not only is not looking to close a school, but can't. Like, that's not something that we are able to do. The only people who can do that are really the school board with permission from DOE. There would have to be a plan that was approved by the Department of Education because we have a legal responsibility to educate all of the kids in our town, whether they attend our school or not. If they live in our town and they're not attending our school, we need to know. If they live in our town and they're not attending our school, we need to know where they're attending school. If they're being homeschooled, we're responsible legally for making sure that that's meeting the requirements set by the state DOE. So a lot of these ideas are um, they're interesting to think about, but I think it's important that everybody remembers what our limitations are. And certainly, we can explore ideas. I think that's really important to gather information and explore ideas for planning for the future. Um, I wanna sort of piggyback on what Jason and Michael Dunn were saying, that to do this sort of research is probably beyond the scope of a volunteer community committee. Um, so I think that if we are gonna have a cost benefit analysis, you're gonna need to get people, um, maybe even from DOE, so, or some consultant that can be recommended to do this work. Because otherwise, we're just spinning our wheels like we've done in the past. There have been a lot of mistakes and it probably started in 1998 when we kicked Dresden out of our SAU, right? And then we made our bed and we are still laying in that bed to this day. But we don't need to continue to make mistakes. So I'm really grateful that we're having this meeting and that the school board and the select board are meeting together. This, um, this has been one of my goals since I got onto the select board. So we know, I think we probably all can agree that any research that's done um, in this question, it's gonna take time, right? There, there's no quick fix. It's gonna take a long time to gather research. It's gonna like, it'll take a long time to get a plan. Um, if it turns out that, you know, the, the best thing for our community and our families is to tuition out our high school, that's not happening in probably two, three years or more. And I bring this up because today, we have students and families who do attend our schools. And um, Wiscasi has a history of openly speaking out in a negative way about the schools. And questioning whether we close the schools is another part of that sort of puzzle that's been, I've observed. I moved here in 2005. When I, when I first came to town, the, there was a woman on the newspaper, an editor, who has since left. But there were weekly articles, um, weekly front page headlines about how bad the schools were. And I thought, my God, did I pick the wrong town? You know, and, and I didn't, like I learned, and for whatever reason, there was some attacks, some onslaught on the schools. I don't know why. But it makes the kids feel bad and it makes the parents feel bad. And, you know, a lot of times, not a lot of times, all the time, as selectmen and as taxpayers, we wonder and we think, how, how can we reduce our taxes? I can tell you, the low hanging fruit is talk, talk up the school. Like we have great schools and if we went out and self-talked about how great our schools were, you know, Wiscasi is situated in the center of multiple towns that do have high school choice. And there's no reason why we couldn't be competitive with some of the neighboring towns. We're better than Booth Bay. I dare say we're better than Morse. And I'm sure that we rival Lincoln and the fact that our numbers are much lower makes us better than Lincoln. If we went out and talked up our school, for every single kid that came in, they would bring 11 or $12,000 in state subsidy with them and it wouldn't cost us another dollar to educate them. So every time we as townspeople or taxpayers or select board members kick around the idea of shutting the school, oh, the kids aren't, they don't have AP classes, we do. We have a lot of AP classes. They don't have this, they don't have that. We're putting another nail in our own wallets, our own coffin of a wallet. I don't know if that's a good metaphor, but you get the idea. The low hanging fruit is as simple as, we have great schools, like move here, because our schools are great. You don't, you, you're not happy with the attention your kids not receiving at Lincoln Academy? They don't have to do that. They don't have to come home and cry because nobody talks to them all day. Send them to our school where we take care of every kid in such a loving way. That's all.
Okay, thank you, Kim. Um, Kathy, you have not had a chance to speak yet.
Well, um, I'm glad that everybody has hopefully gotten the message that uh, this is not a close the school thing at all, and it's merely, um, I think just to give parents a choice, school choice. Now granted, not all of the information has to be gathered and, and we'll see what happens. I'm uh, I'm not gonna say I'm for or against it, but I think people are concerned. I've heard the same thing every, you have said for years. And I've been to school meetings when the previous superintendent was there. And I, I remember the late Mr. Fisher getting up and asking her, how come it was, you know, costing close to $20,000 a year to educate each one of these kids? And that's, that's a legitimate concern. Um, so I think as long as everybody realizes that this movement or whatever you want to call it, is not to close the school, but just to, to figure out some answers. And once, once the group has their answers or the town has their answers, it'd be up to them to decide if it gets to that point. But I do think, and I had mentioned this on our list that we submitted to Dennis for agenda items, that the school board and the Board of Selectmen should meet on a fairly regular basis. And I have been saying that for years and this, it's finally happened and I think it's terrific. And I think we ought to meet at least like every three months or something, maybe quarterly, whatever. Or whenever we feel we need to meet, just meet. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Okay, so everyone's had a chance to speak and, and I think we've, I think we've beat up on this as much as we need to for tonight and we can move on with the rest of the agenda. I want to thank everybody for um, for um, everything they offered on this discussion and for all of us keeping open minds with each other. Uh, Michael, you have something more on item five before we move on to.
I do, I just wanted, I have not actually seen the petition that's being discussed or, or have an actual wording of what's on it. So it would be nice to actually have that.
Right, so the petition, the petition was not circulated because of COVID issues going on. The, the, the individuals who were, were working on the petition just came to the board and asked us if we would consider putting a question on uh, about building a committee on our next town warrant for the people in town to vote for that. And that's not, that's not voting that, voting that committee into place is not necessary. If the, if the Board of Selectmen wanted to um, form that committee, they could just form it. And Dennis, you have something that you can say that would fill in on that?
Yeah, um, I actually think the petition is being circulated now, so.
Oh, is it being, oh, is it now? Okay.
So it would be nice if we are gonna continue discussions on that to have the actual wording on the petition, so we know what we're actually discussing.
Okay, yeah, I haven't seen it either. So I can, I can get a, we can see if we can get uh, the wording for that and.
That'd be great.
And uh, Jason, I'll let you speak and then I think one other, one, one of the people who had the petition wanted to speak. But this was, we were having just uh, board members talk tonight. So um, did you have something to say, Jason? You're muted.
I did that because my furnace is kicking on, the dogs are barking. Uh, I just wanted to ask if they actually changed the wording, because they did use the words abolish grades eight through 12 in the original document that we discussed at a select board meeting. I was the only school board member that was there and I represented myself as a resident and a, a parent of a child in the school system. Uh, it did say abolish grades eight through 12 at that time. So I wondered if they.
I don't, yeah, I, I don't know. We'll, we'll, uh, we'll, we'll see if the.
Twisted around from not, or now it's being, and I also want to point out originally this meeting was about us working together. And before we actually had the meeting, that's the topic of the Warren article came out. So it, it feels a little disingenuous to say that this meeting is about that. When we actually had planned on having a meeting and working together, it sort of took over as the, that war article, my mind, sort of took over as the center of the meeting when it never was intended to be that by, I don't think anybody on either board. You know, that was the surprise.
Yeah, you're correct. This, this meeting was not supposed to have anything to do with that. So we're gonna move on to number six, because I think we spent enough time on this and we, we all, we've all voiced our opinions and um, um, and we do wanna, we don't want to be doing this till 10 o'clock tonight. So we could probably kick this one issue around for several hours. Um, I know, I don't want to be doing this till 10 o'clock tonight. I'd still like to fit dinner in somewhere. Um, so we're gonna move on to number six, which is a, a discussion on the current town endowments, the balances and future use. Jeff, um, Jeff's, um, you had something to say about the endowments, Jeff?
I, I just was, I, I just was gonna, gonna mention to Terry that um, I, I've been on the board for a long time. In my first probably three or four years, everybody from the schools, whether it be for the band, and I don't remember all the um, lines and, and, and our endowments. But Terry, I just didn't know if you knew that that money was, was available. Um, and should we start um, you know, discussions about the school coming to us as a select board? And, and um, it, because I believe some of the accounts Terry's ha- have over a million dollars in them.
And I have looked at that, Jeff, in the audit and I remember asking Bernice some questions when she was coming to the, to the office and she was kind of answering some of those questions.
But I would love to, I would love to, I would love to meet, you, you know what I mean? Either talk with Dennis or us as a board, you, you know, because if we've got, if we've got money that can, that, you know, they, they, they can help to offset your budget, I would, I would love to make sure that you have it available to you.
The million dollars?
No, no, some of these, some of these are.
Dennis knows what I'm talking about, so.
So Pam, I do have, I can put this up on the screen if anybody wants to see what the balances currently are.
Sure. Can you do that? Screen share? Oh, here he comes. Okay. Yeah, so you have the Mary Bailey Fund. And, and I think is that the one that's specifically for music?
No, so the Larrabee Band Fund is specifically. Um, and as you can see, there's almost a million dollars sitting in there. So I mean, I think it would take the band a long time to fit that. Um, so the, you have the two scholarship funds, which is the John French Scholarship and the Haggott Scholarship. Um, but then the rest of these have a little more to them. The Mary Bailey Fund, I would point out specifically is for advanced um, um, academic training. So if there are specialty classes that you guys wanted to put on to try to attract some students in here, um, that's what that money there is there for. Um, and you, you can see there's a half a million dollars there. You can spend all but $59,000 of it. That's, that was the original principle, so.
Do you have documentation of what each one of them?
Um, yeah.
So if, if the next time we get together on our next meeting, if you want to bring that in?
I can, yeah.
Okay, great.
Yeah, if, if we could each have a copy of this and what the limitations are on the usage.
I, I can get another few, sure.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you, Dennis. Wonderful. Very, very good. Okay, so, so there are some funds there that could be of help and they haven't been um, asked for in a few years. They haven't been requisitioned for and we'll find out from Dennis what those limitations are and make some of that money available to the school system. So uh, I, item number seven is the discussion of shared services between town and school. Um, so Dennis, you had something to share on that?
Sure. So um, you know, I think this, I think this meeting is absolutely essential. I tend to be a very collaborative person. Uh, and I think, you know, I don't have all the answers. Pam doesn't have all the answers. Jason doesn't have all the answers. But as a group, we come up with the answers. Um, and to that, and you know, one of the things that Terry and I do, uh, Terry and I meet monthly. Um, we sit down for a half an hour every month, um, have some discussions about, you know, what the school is doing, what the town is doing, and what can we do to help each other out? Um, we're looking to try to maybe collaborate in some areas, um, not necessarily to save money, hopefully, but not necessarily to save money, but to be more efficient, um, and work together on some things. And we've had some discussions about, uh, we already buy our fuel through the school. So that's one area that we're already working together. Um, Terry and I just talked briefly the other day about a few things like, um, you know, we each have our own human resources person. Could we combine those? Are there other positions that we could combine together? Um, that, that could either save us some money or just make us more efficient. Um, just today, Dwayne had a meeting with uh, John Mary uh, about maybe discussing uh, the Parks and Rec Department, um, taking over the outside maintenance of all the school um, uh, playfields and playgrounds and, and those types of things, because we do share them. Um, you know, the Parks and Rec Department uses them some in the summer. And, and so this is some of the discussions that we've already started having. Um, and I'm glad to see us continue with this discussion between, between the two boards. Um, animosity between the two boards is just simply not going to work. And all of us being together, we not only work to make the school better, but we can work to make the town better and make us better as a community. Um, and so, you know, we're, we're looking at all these things and what can we do? And we'll throw some things out. Some of them may work, some of them may not. But you don't know, if, as we've said before, if you don't ask the questions, you, you can't come up with the answers and so. And I don't know if Terry wants to add anything uh, to that or not.
Uh, well, Dwayne and I have been working, trying to work on some things as well. And, and I told him, I said, I got a proposal. I was like, what does it look like? So, so we've got some ideas that we are working on. And, and an example too was um, we had the remote learning. So he had a bunch of kids and, and we tried to provide um, some technology support. And then since we were looking at possibly staffing and stuff. And then I had um, a grant that had been closed and I contacted the state. And um, so right now, we're working on um, uh, a contracted service for the work that uh, the Wiscasi Community Center was able to provide for our students when we were only doing two days a week. Um, so we're looking at um, possibly um, a, over $20,000 reimbursement to um, the community center to assist the families. Um, so like I said, I got permission to do that. And so we are gonna continue to work on um, different things that if I can do uh, anything that will help him. Um, and I've got some ideas for some things for the community center for some staff. Um, so I think Dwayne's very easy. I think, I think I'm very easy to get along with. I'm, you know, my door's open, I'm available. Um, I like to think outside of the box. I ripped that box and burnt that cardboard box. So um, I think it's very important that don't, I think if we keep looking at, well, this has never worked. If we do it this way, it has to be different. Because what's been done in the past has not been successful for any of us, hasn't been beneficial for either of the boards. Um, so I think uh, open communication and just realizing that it's not to better one or the other. The school is a department of the town, like all the other departments. And so we need to look at what we can do um, as a school department um, to assist with things that um, impact our students and staff members um, as well. So we are working on that.
Great, great. That's very good. Uh, we're gonna move on to um, item number eight, which is a, um, Kim, you want, you had had something to say about the uh, current position of the School Resource Officer?
Yeah, I was just wondering if that's something that we are, um, that we still have in the building full-time? And if that's something the school department still wants us to put in our um, in our budget? So it's something that goes on our warrant. It's voted on as a, as a town article and not part of the school budget. And uh, do we want to keep it that way? And um, yeah, do we, I don't even know. I, I had heard that um, Sergeant Hatch was back in the schools, but I don't know if that's full-time. I know over the past few years, we have not always had a full-time SRO, but we have had it paid for through um, the town. So I just want to know if that's something we still want to do. I'm fine with it either way. I just thought we should talk about it as long as we're getting together.
Okay, and Terry looks like she's ready to answer you.
I, I love, I love Officer Hatch, because I've talked to Chief Hasseltine since he came into, to Wiscasi and, and we have a very good working relationship. Um, we know how important it is for kids not to be dealing with law enforcement after the fact when they're in trouble. Um, so Larry had come in with another uh, officer last year and had started doing the DARE program with the fifth graders. That was very, very successful. Um, got t-shirts for the kids and everything. And then um, now Officer Hatch, I know that he comes to the elementary. And then, um, now Officer Hatch, I know that he comes to the elementary school, Kim. Um, he was coming every single day from 10:30 to 12:30. So he's in the cafeteria with the kids. He's washing the tables. He'll go outside to recess. He's in. And I think that, that's still very important, and then I know he goes up to the middle high school. As a shared service, my thought was, I really do not mind putting some of his salary or benefits or his costs. I would not mind putting some of that into the school budget. Um, if we know that we have him specifically a certain amount of time, um, I think that is a shared service. Um, so I, I wouldn't like to see him not be there, whoever it is, um, because I think it is very important for the kids. Um, and I think even for the community, when, when, you know, you see the, I had some issues with some parents refusing to wear masks. Um, and I was able to call, you know, talk to Cory. Cory came over and helped me. And it's like, I had a parent in my face, and I mean, I was very happy that I had a police officer. I mean, I'm not fighting up parents. I have to make sure that I'm following the guidelines. And, uh, um, so I think it's important that we do have that, and we would be willing to put some of that. Um, we have a big cut from the state, though. I'm glad that you saw that, Kim. But I would be, you know what I mean, if we even paid a little bit of it, we would be willing to do that, to keep the SRO officer.
You can guarantee I will be in touch with you in the next few days.
Get witnesses.
I don't know how much, but I do, I, I feel that is a shared service. And if he is in our schools and stuff, I absolutely feel that, that we can. Lori, are you waving?
I think she has her hand up. I've got mine up, but she's got her, yeah, Kathy, go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to say that I think it's great that we do have an SRO available and in place. And I don't really get too wound up about which budget it comes out of, because it's all the same pot in the long run. And I think everybody benefits, not only the students, but I think the citizens benefit. I, I really do. Even me, I think it's great. My kids are, you know, all out of college, married, whatever. But I think it, uh, it benefits everybody, whether they're, uh, a parent with school age children or not. Everybody benefits from an SRO.
Thank you, Kathy. And Lori?
Thank you, Lori. You're Christian Director. Um, I see him in the morning, and, I mean, in the afternoon, from 10:30 to 12:30. He's amazing. He wipes down the tables. He's there to talk to children. He's amazing. I can't say enough about him. Just wanted to say.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lori.
Thank you for sharing that. It's good to, it's good to know that he's that successful there.
And Pam, Pam, also, when we have issues with truancy and stuff, they go right out. They'll go make the house. If I'm worried about a kid I haven't been able to get in touch with, I've been able to contact, and they go right to the house, come back, give me the information. So it, it's been a very, very good relationship since I've been here, especially the last year and a half. It's been very, very good.
Yeah, and it's nice to hear that it's satisfactory.
Yes.
Really is. Um, okay, oh goodness, we're near the, we're seeing the light at the end of the tunnel here. Yay! Look how much work we've gotten done in this amount of time. So, uh, discussion on future joint meetings.
Yeah, we'll just point something out real quick.
Yes, Dennis?
Um, so, this whole evening tonight has been very positive. And hearing this about the SRO and how positive and how important that is, is just another reason why we need to continue having these joint meetings. Because we need to get that information out to the public, so they understand when it comes time to vote for that SRO. And this is some of, one of the questions that tends to be a little closer, um, on the boat. It's important that they know this. And so this is a reason why we need to continue down this path that we're going on right now.
Okay, thank you, Dennis. Jeff, did you have something to say about?
Yeah, um, Terry, um, as far as our, our next meeting, if, if, um, if we could get the numbers from Alma II, pre-K through, through 12, and Westport, pre-K through 12, uh, you know, you know, where they're going to school, are they coming to Wiscasset? That would be wonderful.
Oh, okay. Um, so, uh, I'm going to say, I think we've had some really great discussion. I think we've got a lot more understanding between these two boards right now on, on where our, where our heads are and, and what our, what our concerns are, and, and that we all want to move forward. So, uh, discussion on fu- future joint meetings to do, um, does everyone agree, you can just kind of wave if you want, you agree that we should continue to have these? Like, every two months, every quarter, um, what, whatever works for the majority would be, would be terrific. So, um, I don't know how you want to come up with, um, a future date. Uh, do, do we want to do a doodle poll, who's available when? Do we want to just, uh, say maybe, um, two months from now, or, or something like that? What if, um, Terry and?
I'm so leaving out.
I'm so, me too. Like I said, this is number three for me today.
We were doing negotiations, and we're like, oh, we got to get off, we got to go, we got our six o'clock meeting. So when you said you want to get supper, it's like, ah! I, I.
I haven't eaten yet today.
I think, uh, I think that, um, I can talk with the board and get some dates or times, and then I can shoot that off to Dennis, and then from there, we can go. Um, that, that would be my suggestion. And I just want to say one thing. I don't want to be negative. That's not who I am, but I, I will tell you the truth. This is really the first time that I have felt welcomed by the school committee, by the, um, the select board. Um, besides the conversations with, I've had with Dennis, I think that's been fabulous. But I had gone to meetings before, and, um, it, it was not welcome with open arms. Um, so I was trying to attend the meetings in person, and a couple of things were said to me a couple of times, and it was, um, I chose not to go back and do that. So, uh, again, like we said, Mike?
I would just add to that, Terry, that the, it, it is a refreshing change since the last election, I would say, for, I think we have a much more, um, positive situation here, that I can actually see things working out with the group that we have together here going forward.
Okay, so Terry and, Terry and Dennis are going to, uh, Terry, you're going to get some dates from your board members, um, and get together with Dennis, and maybe set a couple of meetings to see, you know, what the board wants. Every two months, every three months, and we'll, and Dennis can get back to us with meeting dates.
Yep.
And set up future, future meetings. We'll continue these discussions. This has been very helpful. Um, I'd like to see this go out into the community. Um, I hope people in the community watch this and see that some of the information is coming out is very different from the numbers and ideas that we've been hearing out in the public from, from different people. Um, so thank you, everyone, for attending. This has been just terrific work tonight. I'm so, I'm so pleased how this went. And, um, I'm going to, uh, say, I think it's a workshop. We don't really need a motion to adjourn.
Right, right, and no minutes or anything, but, but Jeff, Jeff, out of the 38 kids, I just looked quickly, two of them are Alma kids that came our way, so.
So there was, so there's 38 students in Alma and two.
Out of the 38 new students that we just got, they're all living in, uh, the residence of Wiscasset, but two of them have.
Oh, wonderful. Oh, gotcha. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I was.
I'm working on that. I'm, I'm going to get my way to Dresden, because I, I, I think that.
No, 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 I, I, and, and, um, thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
Great, so thank you, everybody, for coming, and we can all do the Walton's thing by saying, good night, John Boy, good night, Mary Ellen.
Good night, all.
And see you all at the next meeting. Thank you for coming.
Thanks a lot.
Have a good night.
Thank you all very much.
There we go. And we're done.